Can you hear us okay?
We're on that side.
Just. Mars, can you hear us okay?
Well, we're going to have something this afternoon. I'm not sure what.
Is that because we didn't tell them we accepted it?
No, we didn't say anything figured away.
No.
Yeah.
It's not.
Oh. Do it on that. It doesn't seem to be working right. Unless you have to put the face down. Fix it up. It didn't work.
Face up on the field.
Face up, yeah.
On the selfie.
I can hear you.
Thank you.
I think I can hear you.
That we talked again, tell them we accepted.
Yeah, we're good.
We didn't say anything figured away.
Okay, I will call the meeting to order. First order will be to review and accept the meeting minutes from. Oh yeah, meeting minutes from July 18th. Do I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll motion. Wait in a second. Yes.
Yeah.
As of when?
Yes.
Are we, are we on Zoom now?
Yes.
On Zoom, yeah.
Is it also there? We're going to YouTube.
Yes.
It's last week, no.
It was.
Last meeting wasn't on at all. It was two weeks. Record. So if you're not on TV or Zoomed and they're not recording this, I'm going to ask you not to have a meeting. By state law, it has to be recorded. So the people have a record of it.
We have a, we have a record by minutes, by minutes, we have a recording.
Minutes don't count. It has to be the entire meeting. It has to be recorded. It has to be recorded meeting. At least at that, you're not going to know what anybody said during the meeting. Yeah, in this minutes from last, everything was all golden and gray for the broadband. They didn't say anything else. Anybody, it has to be, I know this because they did this down in Gray. The state record, it has to be recorded. And I would be able to do this even more four or five years ago.
So which one is that one?
Good question. Oh, that's today.
Oh, that's today. So it's recording right now.
They're on. Two or three people contacted me. Last couple meetings were in awe.
It's on right now.
Okay, beautiful. Thank you.
And are the minutes on the website or we got a copy of them?
The last one should be on the website.
I don't believe it is.
Oh, it is.
July 5th is the last one that's posted.
Okay, it'll be on the next. It's like.
Yeah.
The agenda is posted. This, this meeting?
Yes.
Oh, that's possible. We're in between websites right now.
You want to come here? One excellent one.
Oh, okay. Bill, watch.
Bill.
Okay. Officer search.
One second. Will this chair be better for you?
I'm good. Thanks.
Wow.
I enjoy. Okay, we're moving on to health officer search. Pat Rosson was supposed to be doing this portion of it. And she's not really doing too well. So I would rather us work on it instead. The only name I have is. Gaspar.
Yeah, have you spoken?
No, I don't know.
No, want me to give him a cold call? Okay.
And what about Elizabeth?
Yeah, I can try. I can circle back to her after I talk to. So, yeah.
Put anything on the website or on social media or anything like that?
We are, technically, we have an old website right now and we're working on a new website. So we're kind of in limbo on, on the website. We, we probably could use the old website, but.
I mean, you got to get it out there. Same thing with the bids. You know, when you bid projects out in this town.
We'll have a new website by then.
But when you build, bid things out or send things out to bid, nobody ever notices.
Yeah.
Well, nobody even in the town. It's like you guys go straight to the outer skaters or the people out of town that you venues and when it should be going up the bid. Same thing if you're looking for a health officer. You know, there's plenty of people around that are qualified. They probably don't know about it because it's small.
We've been contacting, contacting people that we feel will be you know, a good fit for this town.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so you'll look into that. Animal Control Officer Eric's not here, is he? Eric Johnson asked to be, to do that job. Eric is the Animal Control Officer in Reed Field. I asked if he would do a six month trial for $1,500 plus mileage. I assume if you keep track of his mileage and do the job for six months and then we would evaluate him at that point. See if there's any complaints, stuff like that.
Great. Does he amend them all to that?
Yes.
Proposing?
So I would like entertain a motion.
Do you have an interject?
Every paperwork.
Well, yeah, he would have to come in and see you, but I would entertain a motion for Eric Johnson.
All right, I will motion that we hire Eric Johnson as our Animal Control Officer for a six month period for the payment of $1,500 in mileage. So once he gets his paperwork in to carry.
In a second. Carl?
I'll second it.
Oh. B zero. The North Road drainage at the Dunn House. You, you're familiar with that, right? Carl, I'm not sure if you are familiar with that.
I'm aware of it.
There's a little, you can't see it now because it's all grass. But between the firehouse and the Dunn place, there's a little rock kind of pool. The state has already gotten approval from DEP to put a submerged tank and then piped down to the stream. And this is all approved. The state was asked to, to do the work and we, no. They will provide the equipment, the materials and we would do the work. It should cost the town about $10,000. And I asked the people at the state that are familiar with this and they, they mentioned that they would have to put this on their schedule. So I don't know what that means for us. This is kind of in the middle of this, of the season to be scheduling a job like this. So I'll just keep updating you on this.
That one's approved for $15,000.
Right, but I'm trying to keep it as low as I can.
And this is the drainage that comes from the fire station to Minnehawke?
No, this is drainage that comes down the hill. It is, right. And it drains into Matt's. There's a little pool there. They call it a.
Right, right, right back of the, like the back stairs.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, right. So instead of going into this rock pile, it'll go into a system. So instead of going into this rock pile, it'll go into a system and then be piped down. So basically it would remove the sand and allow water to go into the stream rather than sand and water. Once a year, they would come with their machines and suck up the, the sand.
You should question them, Matt, because they said that was going in their schedule last year. The work went, they said they would start scheduling, so you put a little pressure on them.
Nobody, yeah, no one put pressure on them, that's why.
But if you mention that they said they were going to start scheduling last year.
Yeah.
You know, we might be able to push that, that job up a little bit.
Yeah, I, I'll.
Now, who's doing it? Because you just said that, you know, the state will supply materials, but we would be doing the job.
I'd have to put it out for a bit.
So you would just, because you were just questioning, like, I don't know what that means for us. Well, it means right now, we don't even have anybody to do the job for you.
Right, until, until the state commits to it. You know, there's not much we can do. So I'm not going to get too involved with it until they start talking to us.
Years has been spent planning this.
Talking about this?
No, it's been planned for a long time because that's the over grain cesspool that's there right now. It's been in there for about eight years, if I recall.
Yeah, I don't know.
So, you know, when you say something about the state telling us they're going to put it on the list, it's kind of like a bridge. Now they're telling you it's going to be two years before they even look at completing it, which is now going to cost us 1.7 million instead of 400,000. So somebody needs to put their foot down and start demanding some shit because 20 years ago, they were supposed to straighten up the North Road on Dead Man's Curve. Fix this stuff.
It's different though.
We, we, we voted you guys in to fix this stuff, you know, fix it.
We'll work on it.
Fix it.
Just to make sure, because I'm getting ready to close out last year's. So that's the 12,500 village draining.
Right, right.
So I have 12,500 that I'll carry over and put in special revenue.
Right.
Okay.
Right. Anything else on that? This is kind of new to me. I just picked it up like two weeks ago, so.
Out of that, though, they're only supplying material. We're supplying the work, you want to build the.
That's, that's the biggest amount of money is that we're supplying the work, we need a contract.
Right, but it shouldn't take much more than a day, maybe two. It really is not going to take that much time.
Then be surprised.
It's a big problem. Why is it a big problem?
I haven't.
If we, if we have to have, if we have to take the material and then have them reimburse us for it, we'd be better off waiting for the money because it's never going to come.
You put money on other things that are irrelevant. This is.
So we'll keep digging on it. You'll hear update next time.
Well, that's all we keep hearing is an update, an update, but nothing's being done.
Well, sometimes.
Really.
We will. Robbin?
That's my name.
That's yours.
Before I get started, I want to introduce Chuck Wright. As many of you know, it's my predecessor as chairman. And Chris Lynch, if it's just wait, is from Matrix Design Group. This is a company that we've decided to do business with. And for your information, last week, the select board at Fayette also selected Matrix Design to do work for their network. I have a handout for you. I sent you something earlier. There are three changes. You can hand us those four copies to the guys. So I'm here tonight to ask for approval of four requests. Would you like an overview of all four or do you want to go through them one at a time? Do we want to make copies of this for everybody or?
Have you changed it since you?
I sent you an updated version today. I can tell you what the changes are. All the changes are all on the front page.
Okay.
And on the, the copy that I just handed to you, the request number three, the underlying portion is new. The summary table at the bottom of the first page is new. And the note next to that table, which explains that none of the money from the second tranche of ARPA funds would be obligated until the money arrives.
Yep.
Okay.
It has arrived.
Yeah.
The second, the second?
Yes.
Oh, really? That's, I thought it wasn't coming till October.
I know, we got it already.
Happy New Year.
Yep.
Magically appear.
So let me, why don't I go through them one by one? If they have questions, I'll be glad to answer. And I tried to frame these on the document in a manner that would serve as a motion for you guys to, as you're agreeable to vote on. So the first one is to, to pay the final invoice from Mission Broadband under the previously approved agreement, which is for $3,300. That brings the total of the services that they provided to $15,000, which is the limit that was approved last time.
And what was the $15,000 for?
Let me respond to that.
I don't want to get too deep into this because, but real brief.
So Mission Broadband is an engineering and consulting firm. And we've used them for assistance in evaluating proposals we received from four different vendors and for preparing for the various steps in the process that we need to go through to get grant funding and approval from the voters.
Okay.
So what if, what if the voters turn down the proposal? What happens?
And then.
Where else $15,000 by itself?
More than that.
When, when do you plan on having this project started? Like actually, if it's approved, which I think it's not, but it's approved, when does the program actually start?
Well, I guess the question is, what do you mean by start?
I mean, you have, you have.
Running wires, you mean?
Running wire, running survey.
So the first step is to do what's called a make-ready study.
Okay.
Which involves understanding where all of the poles and the position of wires on the poles are and preparing applications to the owner of the poles for installing new wires as needed. I think that could take, I don't know, Chris, six months to a year.
Well, the, the step of doing a poll survey, that will just take like a month and a half.
Right, but then.
But then you go on to. Also, the utility companies, that could take six months.
Maybe, maybe it'll be about six months. And then, what is it, 18 months to build the network out?
Yeah. Who, okay.
The make-ready is $800,000 to $1 million.
Okay, so you plan on doing this through bonds? How, how do you?
The financing for this, which has all been provided before, is a combination of taxes, grants from the state and contribution from Matrix Design Group.
So do you have a breakdown? How much is it going to cost us taxpayers opposed to?
Better information is available on the website.
You don't know it?
I don't, I don't want to quote numbers. I just got out of the hospital a couple of weeks ago and I'm not remembering all my numbers exactly correctly. But you're welcome to go on the website and you'll see all the information you did there.
My concern is this is going to be spent. And if the town actually decides not to go with it, all that money is going to be gone. That's, that's how I look at it. I don't know if that's correct or not. And on top of that, if you're looking at bonds, you have to bond like really, really close to when you expect to put fiber. So if something happens with a bond or it's going to cost money in the future, it, it's just going to be $800,000 to $1 million that was spent and the taxpayers have to, have to.
Pay back.
Pay back. Well, if I could, the steps that are involved here to figure out what the, the make-ready cost would be from the utility companies are, only they can tell you what some costs. So you do a poll survey to figure out where the poles are, if, if that pole is serving the house or if there's no broadband going to that house. So you do the survey of the poles. You put in what's called a strand map saying, okay, here's the most logical routes for the fiber to go. And you put them in with the utility companies. Now, once the utility companies have those applications, they have X amount of days in order to get back to you and say, this is what it was going to cost for the make-ready. And those things should coincide hopefully with November election. So when the voters go into the elections, they'll know this is what it's going to cost. So there really, there will be a cost of, of getting the data of, you know, the polls and what's on them. And if nothing happens yet, you're right, you know, that, that is a cost. However, keep in mind that the polls don't magically change. They're always going to be in the same GPS location. Keep in mind that a third of the town is unserved. So if somebody goes to do something for that third of the town that's unserved, that data that's being collected today could be reused for that purpose. And, and the town actually owns the data? The town owns the data. Okay.
Oh, really? The item on the table right now is asking to pay a bill.
Okay, so that's the first, that was $3,300?
Yes.
I move that we pay the bill to Mission Broadband for $3,300.
Second.
Oh, 3, 0.
So what we'd like to do now is extend the arrangement with Mission so that they can support us in our contract negotiations with Matrix and apply for an infrastructure grant from the, of any connectivity authority.
Just one more.
And that is the 1,500?
$15,000 max. We don't expect to use most of that until, some of that will be used for negotiating the agreement with Matrix because of the engineering and project management elements of the contract that are beyond our expertise. And then the rest of it would come when it comes time to apply for the grant. And the rules for that have not come out yet, but it appears that that process is supposed to start in October.
Okay, that's the second one?
Correct.
Okay, I move that we approve the expenditure of ARPA funds to extend the Mission Broadband Consulting Agreement to support the contract negotiations for broadband infrastructure grant applications and related matters up to 15,000.
One second.
Vote.
He can't vote, he's on the broadband committee.
That's right, he can't vote. He's not even staying on, let me.
I'm, I am researching that with the internet.
We have researched. You're not allowed to be on that board that's spending money and vote for it too. It's against the law. It's M&amp;A rules. It's in the book.
It's right there. You'd like me to show you, so I believe page 19.
Okay, so put it down, it's 2, 0.
You might as well stand up.
You might.
So with all this money, we're going to have we've already spent in this broadband without even getting a damn thing.
Not that much.
Well, we're ready to stand in.
Wait a minute. $67,000 from ARPA money that came to the town? Can we just extend that?
I spent $18,700.
We still have our money left from the first.
From first. The total amount of ARPA money approved for broadband from the first tranche is $27,500 and we haven't spent.
I have a question. You're saying that one-third of the community is unserved? What part of the community is unserved? The dirt roads?
Can they get it from the website? They get that.
If you look at the Casco Bay report that's on the website and it's been there for over a year, you'll see a map that shows where all the roads are that are also.
Are they, the people who are unserved, are they properties that are part-time residents who have a second home, a second vacation home up here?
Super.
The debt, your definition of unserved, does that include people who have a second home?
Yes.
And choose not to?
And choose not to?
And choose not to use internet?
Yes.
No.
Well, the, the, the total number of properties on Trio or the tax system in this town is about 1,200 and something, including properties that have structures on them and don't. If you eliminate the properties that don't have structures, it's closer to 1,200. And the percentage of those that are served and unserved is about two-thirds served and one-third unserved. As far as who owns the properties that are unserved, about half are seasonal property owners and half are other residents of the town.
So why would you want to focus, why would people who are unserved that are seasonal residents? When, if I'm traveling, I'm on vacation, I have my phone, I have internet. I have access to the internet. And I would be considered unserved because my residence doesn't have internet?
No, that's. Yeah, we're getting too deep into this, but a lot of this can be answered. But to, to answer that real quickly, yeah, there might be a seasonal here and the next door neighbor is someone that lives here year-round. And that could be a seasonal, then there could be a, you see what I'm getting at?
Right.
Just because you're a senior seasonal doesn't mean you're locked out. There could be someone there that, that would really like that internet.
But there would be a separate address.
But they're ri, they're right next to someone that's, you know, seasonal.
Oh, I understand it is that you're going to take over two-thirds of the taxpayers in Mount Vernon taxes to pay for service so that the one-third of people can get when we have obviously bigger issues in this town other than the drought.
If they want to use it.
If, if they want to use it.
Let's say you have a $4 million bonds that pay for this. That $4 million bond, you go towards fixing the bridge, adding a fire truck, adding an ambulance, heaving roads. When whatever that number is, you're, you're trying to help people who don't, who aren't served, but the majority of people have internet. It may not be fast, it may not be efficient. On top of that, you have fiber coming from the house, you have a bottleneck, if I'm, if I'm thinking correctly, that it's going to be in the house, but the house is sort of like copper. And if you just look at Wi-Fi, it's not that it's going to slow down to create that connection.
Well, we'll have public hearings. We've got information on the web.
You keep going back to the website when you just told us at the beginning of the quarter.
Well.
So how can you keep telling us to answer to the website when nothing's there?
The broadband website is operating and can be used. It's fully functional.
Our committee will meet with any group of five or 10 people that's interested in this topic and will answer all your questions. All you have to do is contact us. There's a, there is a email address on the website. I don't know it yet, but we could probably look it up before you leave tonight. And all you have to do is say, we would like to get together with you and, and ask us questions. We'll be glad to do that.
That would be great because there's a lot of unanswered questions. There's a lot of money on the table here for this situation when it could be spent more usefully somewhere else. Do you, do you?
Of course, that's always a, a question. And we've been working on it for three years.
I'm just concerned.
We, we have, it's an extremely complicated issue. There's many factors that go into it that each person needs to consider. And this isn't really the best time or place to go into it.
So there's other towns that voted it down for a reason that have more money than we do. So why? Why?
We need, we need to keep this going, okay?
Are the meetings that you're doing and talking to people, are they really going to change your mind about going forward and stopping this process? I mean, are we here for nothing? Or are we adding input to stop the funding?
We, at the town meeting, we approved three warrant articles related to this project and that's what we're operating under today. One is to expand. One is to, uh, expand up to two hundred thousand dollars to service a debt. Uh, if two conditions are met, one condition is that we sign an, an agreement. With a, uh, company and get a grant to fund a specific project. And secondly, that the voters approve what we're doing at a ballot referendum. Ballot referendum was chosen because everybody can vote. Even if they can't make it to the polls, they can use an absentee ballot. A town meeting only allows people who show up to vote. We thought that this is an important enough decision for the town. That every person in this town should be given all the possible information and given every opportunity to have their opinions known. The second, uh, warrant on the, uh, on the, on the, uh. In the town meeting was to spend the ARPA money. There was a debate at the town meeting and the, the town meeting devoted to give the select board. Permission to spend up to eighty nine thousand dollars of that money. The last tranche of ARPA money, a majority of it did not go to broadband, it went to something else. So in its wisdom, the, the people who showed up at the town meeting decided to vote the way they did.
Now, is that before they tally, they passed it or after they tally? Because there was a lot of things that were passed at that town that they weren't even done taking paddlings on and pass the rule.
Well, I can't, I can't respond.
We've gotta move on, um, you're on the third request.
So now the third item is to hire, uh, to approve up to nine thousand dollars of ARPA funds to hire Remington French. As a contractor through November eleventh for ten to fifteen hours a week. At thirty five dollars an hour to assist the committee. With broadband-related grant applications, broadband-related publication, education activities and broadband website maintenance. This includes a maximum of fifteen weeks times fifteen hours per week at thirty five dollars an hour. Plus up to eleven hundred seventy five dollars for printing and mailing of education materials to town residents. And a copy of her resume is attached.
This is for a couple of nine thousand?
Maximum of nine thousand, probably less than that because she's not gonna be able to work fifteen hours a week.
To, to, to be able to qualify as a contractor, I just need to ask her a couple of questions, is she going to be using her own equipment?
Yes.
Okay, nothing that.
She'll be a contract eleven ninety nine employee.
Ten ninety nine. Um, so, and she will be working at her home?
Yeah.
And, okay, and you will not set her hours, she will set her own hours?
No, I'll set up, we will give her work to do and unsupervised what she, how she does with her hours. And she'll be a, it's a contract that will, and if the performance is unsatisfactory, the arrangement will be terminated.
Okay, to meet, uh, the IRS contact qualifications. You cannot tell her how to do things or set her hours.
We can't say like eight, or eight AM to ten A.
We're not telling her when she has to start work and when she has to end work, we're just saying ten to fifteen hours a week.
Okay.
And we're giving her specific tasks to accomplish.
Yeah.
I am familiar with the difference between an employee.
I was just wanting to make sure there, because that's another seven point.
We're lucky to have someone with her background in town.
Um, I move that we hire Remington French for up to nine thousand dollars. Like, yeah, nine thousand dollars. To help the broadband committee.
Second.
Vote. Two zero.
But you, did you approve the entire request?
Yeah. Uh, do you need paperwork from her?
Yes.
So.
What do you need a kind of agreement?
I need, I need the actual contract and I need a W nine.
If you have a contract form that you'd like to use for contractors, which should be able to make one up.
You know, how to make one up and, and you approve it. Because each one is different, but we need to specify the terms. And a W nine is just the straight IRS one.
Number four. So, and this is going back to what Chris was talking about earlier, this poll survey. So we're asking that the psych ward approve use of up to fifty seven thousand five hundred dollars of ARPA funds. To accept and pay for Matrix Design Group's proposal, which is attached to conduct poll survey and poll attachment application creation. And submit it. This includes fifty seven thousand five hundred. Uh, for the quoted amount of, uh, which is a fixed fee per poll. Plus a contingency, uh, for, uh, joint write-out with telephone and power.
Right.
I move that we accept, um. The proposal for fifty seven thousand five hundred of ARPA funds to pay Matrix for the poll survey.
Fifty seven thousand dollars for survey polls? Just to look at them? Oh wow, that looks, yeah, I think it might be.
Two zero. I don't even know, probably just.
Why did you decide to start the line for broadband instead of the bridge?
Voted that way, we split it at the special town meeting and then. At the special town meeting we did.
Special town meeting was sixteen thousand dollars for the bridge and then it was another twenty thousand.
Twenty seven thousand.
Ten eight seven or twenty seven thousand for, but you just spent eighty seven thousand dollars. Just like that.
Yep, it's fast.
Yeah.
Well, we spent, uh, fifty, half a million dollars on the school tonight.
Yeah, we can't do anything about that for the next three years, it's out of our control. Because nobody caught the town's.
If you're just hanging around. Thanks very much, we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
See you soon. Glad you're out and about.
Transport station.
I do appreciate you coming by.
There's been a problem at the transport station, will be bulky waste. Filling up Wednesdays and not having enough room on the weekend. Um, I talked with Kenny, Kenny Spino, he's the, the, uh, transport station manager over at Belgrade. But he lives in town. Um, he said that for fifty dollars a month, we can have an extra bin.
Oh.
At transport station. Uh, so I would like to move that we pay an extra hundred dollars. For two months rent for an extra bin for the bulky waste.
Oh, second.
Um.
How are you gonna move it?
What's that?
How are you gonna move?
Don't, uh, they're gonna just set it near the, uh, bread pile. Or the chip pile. And when mattresses come in, they're gonna have them throw it in that instead of where they're throwing them now. Couches, uh, mattresses, big stuff that usually fills that bin too fast. You just open the door. If it's on flat ground, you go.
Open walk in him.
Yeah, yeah, and that for fifty bucks a month. Cheap. Vote.
Yep.
Vote. Zero, hundred dollars a month, five, hundred dollars for two months, next summer we'll do it.
Early on.
Yeah. Um. I call the sheriff, uh. Belgrade is doing a, uh, drug takeback, so I call the sheriff. And they're putting us on a October schedule for a drug takeback. So they can either set it up here at the parking lot or they can do it in the transfer station. And they'll call me when it gets closer to October. Okay. Um. Oh yeah, um, someone's gonna be getting in touch with me about paint cans, my cans of.
Like just.
Cans of paint.
Just those.
Yeah, right now, the only way you can bring paint cans to the transfer station is if the paint is hard. Or if you fill it with keeler. But right now what people are doing is just throwing it in with their trash and hide it. And that's a lot of weight, so this outfit will take paint cans, stain, anything. It doesn't matter if it's liquid or hot or anything, throw it in the bin and they take it away for nothing. So they should be getting in touch with me, that should save some money too. Um. For any residents that are close to the Belgrade, uh, transfer station. Um, they can buy stickers at the Belgrade Town Office. Um, and these stickers can go on a thirty gallon bag. And they can, they can just use, you know, a Mount Vernon resident can bring their trash. So anybody on the down road or in that Twink Snow Road area, they can bring their trash to the Belgrade Town. Trash.
Do you know what those sticker prices are?
I don't remember, they're not very expensive. I'll find out next time. Website.
I spoke with, uh, Angelique and Rob last Thursday and, uh, they are. We are basically asking them to migrate the content. Uh, and they're, it, the word I had was that they're gonna have that content migrated by the end of this week, October fifth. I haven't had confirmation on that yet, I did reach out to them today to see where they are, but, uh, that's what they gave me as a target date for. Last Thursday.
By the end of this week?
Yes.
But.
Yeah. In the meantime, I've, uh, started working on the, uh, the classes myself and, and I expect I'll be. Uh, contributing to the new website, uh, this week and, uh, I think we'll start seeing some content, uh, you know. Updated content, uh, being made available there, I don't have a date for the cutover at this moment.
That'd be good. Did you guys get copies of the fee schedule? Did I send that to you?
Uh, was it like a week?
Yeah. I'd really like to look at each one of these to make sure that, what, what we're doing is we're looking at the fee schedule, it's in the site plan review. Uh, try to make it more cost effective, so if you're gonna go get a, a building permit. Uh, that the cost covers, um. The town's expenses, so if, if the, uh, CEO has to make two trips out there, then make sure. That it's covering his expenses, um, for instance, um. Like an automotive graveyard right now. I think it's twenty five dollars. And we're looking at bringing it up to fifty dollars. Uh, driveway entrances, uh, ten dollars, we're looking at fifteen dollars. We're trying to bump these up. Site plan. Um, right now it's fifty dollars. For new construction, we're looking at bringing it up to a hundred dollars.
Is that, that doesn't include mailing costs, right?
No.
The applicants are still charged.
That's right, so yeah, we should be looking at that too. So I think we ought to sit on this for another week, another two weeks. You don't have a copy of that, do you?
I, I've seen the, the revised copy, I don't know if I have the most recent.
Okay, that might be a good one to scan it and get it in.
Did you compare these fees of the town, what you've been doing with Wefield, Belgrade?
Uh.
Do it that way, ball off.
No, this is something, uh, a lot of it was proposed by, you know, the CEO.
Well, I agree, there's more money needs to be.
Yeah, and he, he works at several towns, so he's kinda looking at what he's getting from other towns too.
I just, I'm definitely, he has to get more of, I mean, he should be working two and three days a week as far as my personal thing. From stuff that's going on that he's not catching.
Well, another thing I'm putting in too is for him, like on a day that he doesn't work here. He's coming into town to do an inspection. I'd like to have him get paid for that. By two hundred dollars.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's covered.
I mean, it helps, uh, helps the contractors out, it's like, I have to have a Scott being sort of bed inspected tomorrow. I had to make sure I stayed tonight to get it ready because.
Right.
You know, so this is a day, but that, you know, that's, that's something, again, contract is held up, costs big money.
It saves him, that two hundred dollars is nothing.
Yeah.
It saves him, so that's, I'm writing that into it too.
There was a number of fees for any of our other. They never had fees, if you had to pay them. That, well, that was parting your permits, so. You don't pay your permits.
Right.
And now we don't, so we don't have to pay for a permit, we just have to hire that guy.
No, 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 you, you pay fees. Right. Right, you pay fees for anything.
So this guy, Bill get, when you come to get married, Bill, that'll be in that permit that, that is what he needs to cover it, so.
Right. Um. Okay, tax. Um, this is another thing that's available for senior citizens, it's a new, new item. Uh, it's a property tax, um, stability for senior citizens, it's an application. The person has to be, um, sixty-five. He has to have had, um, a homestead exemption for ten years.
He has to have been eligible for homestead.
Right. Oh, yeah, really, okay, that's even better than.
Yeah.
Uh, and he has to have this form filled out and sent in. To the assessor by December first, so we're really gonna push it.
Yeah, I have to send it out to H E A place so that.
Okay.
They can help communicate it too.
Yeah. No, they can, we've been filling them right out.
Because on the website it said the application wouldn't be available.
The state said it wouldn't be available, but then they just sent it out.
Yeah, they're pushing, yeah.
The other thing is that I've been asking questions that have come up between by and here. And one of the big things was, well, is there downside to the freezing, anybody that you know, you should encourage them to do it. There's no financial restrictions or limitations on that. Um, if you freeze it now and. I don't think it ever happens, if the mill rate and valuation would go down. Then you froze your taxes at a higher level, it will automatically go down to the lower, lower level, so you're not gonna lose that if you freeze them. Um, and there really is no downside, but you have to apply every year. So you're trying to encourage H E A in place to get. So trying to encourage AG and places, something, something rolling that can remind people.
Yeah, that's hard when you're, when you get elderly, trying to remember all that stuff.
Yeah, the other, the other thing is that right now, the state, this is what really worries me. The state intends to reimburse municipalities for all of the revenue that they lost.
Right.
However, they can each year decide not to and go down to fifty percent funding with no problem, so that the municipalities in the long run are losers. And it's the younger households that are really gonna pay the burden for it.
Right.
So.
Okay. What's another one we should get? Scan and get it, because we could email it out really easy.
I already have scanned and emailed.
Oh, you did? Okay.
I can tell me where to send it and I can email it to you.
Email it to Heather. And me.
Okay. Maybe, if you don't mind, can you just send it to all of us and that way if someone reaches out?
Right. Yeah, it'd be good. Roger, the assessor, would like to have permission to look at people's taxes when they're talking, when he's talking to them. They come in when he's working in house and talking to, and he would like to be able to look at the taxes with him. Right now, he can't look on Trio and see what they're paying for taxes.
That's right. That's a HIPAA. It's a HIPAA. You have to have them sign a statement for him to be able to see their taxes.
I don't think so.
You might wanna check it out. It covers a lot of stuff.
Yeah, the taxes are, actually, the taxes are public record because they're on the website. You can go on the website and look them up.
I think it's just a, a a permission thing with Trio that would allow him to, right?
Yeah.
So it would be a matter of who has administration powers with Trio. Why?
Right now, both have their ID.
So if someone would entertain a motion to allow Roger permission to.
Do, do you want to, to check with MMA to, to double check the HIPAA thing?
Well, you know, let's just say Joe Blow doesn't know this gentleman from Adam. And he doesn't want to discuss in front of him his monetary issues or anything like that. He might want to have him sign a statement saying he can talk to him. You see, it's like a patient doctor.
Well, but see, actually, right now, you can go on the website and you can look at my taxes.
I'm sitting, right.
Yeah.
It's a conversation.
Yeah, they're right on the fold of this outside. You could pick it right up right now and look at my taxes.
Yeah, no, I, I understand. So he has the right to
See what I'm saying?
To talk to the person.
I can check. Okay.
And then just let me know when I can change that.
Okay.
If it's
Okay, another one is Heather would like to have the okay to get the KJ email? No, how do you get that?
Subscription.
Prescription.
She had a subscription. She can't remember the password and I can't, can't get on to reactivate the debit card.
Right.
It expired and she didn't know, so now she can't get on.
Right, so she would like to have permission to get the KJ.
Electronic.
Electronic.
Yeah. I just had this again and she couldn't let me into, she can't log in, so I couldn't do it. So I had to start from scratch.
Oh.
And talk to the sales.
So I'll make a motion that we get the KJ electronically. Heather can have it in the office.
I feel like they don't have the most instinctual subscription service.
That's it. I have, anyway.
You also need to make sure when we'll set up accounts that they're I may, I'll talk to Scott to see if there's a good way to keep the accounts because she doesn't know what her, her account password is.
Your password manager.
You talked about that.
Um, I just had a quick thing, which was testing the beach, the lake water. I didn't want to do it if someone else was already doing it.
No, no.
Okay.
Pick up a test kit.
Yeah.
State lab.
Yeah.
We've reserved the community center for Wednesday and I understand the microphone. Is there another microphone?
Yes, Mark.
Well.
Should be outside.
I talked with June and she didn't know.
Josh, Josh.
Oh, Josh. I guess we've got
We've got, we've got a backup.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, you put on a planning board a month ago and
Do we have people? No, yeah, yep, that's fair.
Well, the oath is there.
What's that?
The oath or the, the appointment form is there. Also, Rochelle has to be put up the budget.
Yeah, we don't want to do the budget regard. We will keep your name, though. I make a motion to Doug Stevens on the planning board.
Um, oh, sorry, it's just, we should just change that date, maybe, maybe not. But I'll second. Just mixing.
No, that's fine. Oh, did you second?
I did second.
So thanks for that.
Okay. We can take that to have.
Through all the town. Now, so Kyle, you, you select.
What's that? Kyle? Yes.
You're the new selectman. Now, you're also part of the broadband committee.
I am, yeah.
Now, for any reason, that little bit of conflict interest there, being on that committee, trying to push it as opposed to, you know, your, some of that vote as well.
I'd be willing to remove myself from the broadband committee if the MMA says that's what I need to do.
I just, you know, I just, I had no clue what's true and all, I'm just trying to
I, I have definitely been on the broadband.
I figured that's why I am.
Yes.
Yeah. But you said you were gonna check in for that last.
Right, I am. I'm one of the, left out at the MMA, yes.
And about the other familiar conflicts as well. Yeah, and your wife is on several committees that you have oversight on as part of this board.
I don't recall having that conversation.
Well, that's another one. And that applies to AM as well. As oversight on. Asking them.
I just made it seem familiar bias. Can't do that. You can't have your husband doing something or your wife doing something and then you go with your, that's biased. You don't have anybody on the budget.
Your husband's not on the budget, can you?
Oh, yeah.
Those conflict interests.
But the budget committee doesn't actually
They're, they're
You vote on the budget.
They, they don't vote on the budget. They, they present a budget, the selectmen present a budget, the town votes on the budget. So I'm gonna look at that.
We could check on it. We could check on it.
Yeah, I think it definitely Well, I mean, I'm just moved to this, so I'm trying to learn, it's just things that make sense and don't make sense on a regular basis. Now, I know Kyle missed a few town meetings.
I think it was one.
Slotman, slotman meetings.
Selectman meetings. That's one. I've heard stuff about, you know, just random stuff, you know, like finances and stuff of being worked at from home, in-house.
Financial. You're talking about? You're talking about not everybody working.
Not everybody working here.
No.
Like, I think a lot of our business needs to be handled here in house. How, you know, what computers and what stuff are
Anything with a serial number is concerned. Anything with a serial number should never leave the office. So that would be, I think he's complaining to Carrie, she works at home. She has people serving going home, although they shouldn't leave the office. I think that's what he worried about.
So you mean social security numbers?
Huh?
Social security.
It's like social security, everything, everything. Her business should be down in the office and anything that has a social security number or anything like that should leave the office.
You don't have social security number. She, she comes in Monday, Wednesdays, right, and Fridays.
Wednesday, I have open office hours the next morning. Friday's Saturday, Sunday's Sunday.
No, that's something people worry about.
Yeah, it's good information. I just didn't know. I was checking. I just wanted to know how, you know, some of this stuff.
No, I haven't taken any of your equipment out of the office.
No, we learned.
No, I wasn't talking about particularly. I was just, in general, in general, we do, we, the people, some people work from home, some people work here. Is it kind of confusing? We miss things.
No, no. Should be. We, because slotman, I do most of my stuff, you know, I make phone calls all day long.
Exactly, yeah.
Uh, no, Carrie, the girls, they all do that stuff here. That's where the computers are.
I will say I do some of the recording from home because now I can access Trio on the web.
Yes. Anything else?
Nothing.
Anything else up here?
I do. I have something, you know, I do.
Good.
So I read the newsletter today, sure.
Yep.
Anyways. It was the broadband piece. The two are congresspeople, those statements were in there. I find that very political. It shouldn't have been in there.
Oh, cool.
Yep, King and Collins, their, their statements that are in the broadband statements, that was in the newsletter. And that's, that's the political, that's political, that shouldn't have been in there.
Yeah, I agree. I don't, I didn't, I haven't read it yet, so. I'm doing too many things right now. I tried to get bridge information, but I just couldn't get the state call back. Yeah, I, I'll take a look at it. I don't, I agree with it.
That's the matter.
Collins and King should not have been in that.
That was one question.
That was an easy one.
Interesting. When it came to solar, that was a whole different issue, wasn't it?
What's that? Anything else?
Solar, it was a different issue. That was a partisan issue.
Right.
Supposedly.
Right.
Ninety-seven percent of people.
I have that.
Right.
We had a great meeting. We wanted the whole town to hear about solar. They wouldn't allow. That's a sad thing. It seemed like I got, so I saw a funny paper article, a guy reading his newspaper and he said, now, it's funny, this newspaper's only half as thick as it used to be and his wife said that because you only hear one side of the story. And that's what would get Alice, Alice was a good thing for this town. There was a people at the town meeting because Alice woke the town up on what's going on. What two guys did to her was a raw deal. I'll tell you. If she wants to take legal actions against you, he shouldn't have been voting on it. He'd been to one meeting. He voted her out. He'd been to one meeting. He doesn't know who she is.
You don't, you don't know that.
Who said there was free to zero?
He said, he said it was free to zero. It was the vote was free to zero law.
He wrote that in the paper.
It was, it was, we can't talk about it.
Why not?
You, you told us, you told us it was vote that treated them upset.
I was gonna say, you told a couple people in the town that we heard that from.
That's right.
I have not talked to anybody. If someone said that and you're not, we cannot talk about it. That's executive session.
If you hire somebody else, they better show both sides the thing. And, and I wrote up an article on the thing, all told it was golden, how broadband golden go. Didn't say there was a lot of people talking against broadband at the meeting. That's not both sides of the issue. You gotta know that the people here caring, because everybody said so. Well, there we go again. She brought it so people were showing up because we care about this town. I don't want to goddamn Boston like the broadband wants. We want Mount Vernon, the town. We don't want Boston. They want Boston. That's not what we want.
Well, we want the kids.
The kids can get satellite.
You, you want.
We can, you're using the kid thing that, that's just bogus.
So here's what we'll give you, Bob. If you want it both ways, you give us back our taxes that we pay in for school and we'll give you broadband. Broadband, if, if you want your kids to stay at home and be homeschooled on that computer, perfect. You give me back my seventy-five percent that I pay in taxes every year and we'll give you a broadband.
Whether the kids are in school or not, they need, they need
They don't need, why are stupid our kids are these days because of this frigging thing? They don't know anything. They can't do math on a
I can give you, I can bring you three people who work from home with business that use a satellite. And they said, you use satellite, too? There's four, five, but, and it's perfect. They said it works because it was too hard to get lines yet. One of the guys talked about when cable came to town. They said, oh, six feet old hook up the cable. When it come to his house and they said, well, I live down this road, it's a half mile. They said six thousand dollars. So, so he went to sat, he went to DISH and paid thirty, forty dollars a month. That's what's gonna happen with this satellite internet law. They vote, it's already out there. And you're gonna spend so much damn money.
Nothing.
Four million dollars that we're gonna spend. It's gonna be obsolete.
Sit down with the committee and listen to them.
We, we had him come here. He was a nice guy. Come to our meeting.
You're willing to sit down and listen to it.
Away from with that meeting while that gentleman was talking is that he wanted more businesses to come to Mount Vernon. He wants Mount Vernon to grow. He wants this for the
We want the taxes on the lake to go up. So he takes people like me who live on it, on the lake, and I can't afford to live there so that Massachusetts, Boston people can come out and be here. I didn't pay, that's what he said. That's the only thing he, what he said was all about bringing business and people, people come into, people come into bed and breakfast.
Yes.
They gotta have it for bed and breakfast. Basically, it's a dull thing. Bed and breakfast, well, I'm on vacation. I don't want to be doing business. Some of people, they're getting away ball. And you're spending all this money and you're gonna take the vote and there's so many people in this town who don't want it. So you're wasting all this money upfront because you got the cat before the horse.
You've gotta do the engineering before you can do.
It's about at the town meeting, if it had gone through, what was it, sixty-one to fifty-nine? It was a close vote. I would have been, my red flag right there, they passed the door, but maybe I gotta do a little more research on it.
Do it again.
A lot of votes are like that.
They want the townspeople for the rich seasonal people coming in that don't want to pay for their
A lot of votes are close, you know? That's the way it was going.
Four votes different.
Yeah.
Egypt, Pondero, Gessapondro, those roads.
Well, Black Hill Road, they don't Well, Blake Hill Road, they don't have internet down there. That's a major road.
She got it.
She got it. Two of the people I do, they, they get the satellite. They said they wouldn't do anything else. Fifty dollars a month. Fifty dollars a month.
Well, they may get it less, less through the broadband.
Four hundred dollars.
How are you gonna make it last? They're gonna play every month on that ball.
Their taxes.
They'll get a free after showing up at your house.
Why don't you ask for the broadband committee?
We have it.
He came to our committee meeting last week.
Oh, okay.
Trump was at our meeting. Yeah, I'm telling you, we're telling you the same thing right now that we told him there. And he just, well, you know, um, if we can't have business come into this town, we don't want it. I've lived in this town fifty-one years and I'm fifty-one years old. I've lived here all my life. I don't see people coming here from Ohio. I don't need people coming here from Massachusetts telling me what we need to do in our town. We need to be in our town and we need to take it back.
And that's why I'm here. I came from two towns. I came from a small town. That was it. The Boston people come in and I went to Auburn and it's the same thing. And that's not what I want. This is such a unique town. That's why I tried to tell you with Seoul. It's a unique town. We don't need all the Boston people.
As I said in the beginning of this meeting, you three were elected to this town to make sure that shit gets done here. Make sure it gets done.
For the two people of.
Make sure it gets done for the majority of the people that want what we want. Not the two hundred and fifty people that come out and vote. One side and a hundred and fifty to come out and vote for the other side. Make sure it's for all the people in the town of Mount Vernon.
That's what we're supposed to do.
Seventeen hundred and some, some odd people in this town. You're not just catering to the four hundred that voted.
That's what we're trying to do.
That's why we wanted to have a written up ballot.
There was sure, there was sure a lot of warrants on there for somebody, a ballot vote.
Well, I'm, I'm speaking specifically about.
Yeah, wow. Look, look at your warrants. Look at your warrants. They grow every year exponentially and it's ridiculous.
And on this, you guys, you guys have taken a lot. I respect you guys with it. But a lot of this stems, New Love Paul Crockett, but I come here for year after year after year. If he's going to do this and he's going to take care of that.
And he never did it. Damn thing.
Just like this on the hill with the catch basin. He was going to take care of it. He does not, did nothing about it. And those things.
It's like Josh wants it. You're going to end up with a boss you don't guarantee it.
That, yeah. That, that right away. You said he's going to put it on the warrant and what he do, what's that?
Day after, day after, he tells, nope, it's not going.
You voted for it. You.
I did.
Oh.
Not me. I voted against it. I wouldn't give him a right of way across there.
You need it. He needs it.
No, he doesn't.
Yes, he does. It was, it was sold to him when they deeded right away.
I'm not going to give him a right of way across town property.
It was deeded on that piece of property that you guys got from Dickie and Julie. Yeah, so. You're going to end up.
We're going to change that. The way the town meeting is going to, it's going to change. He and I talked about it.
Stuff's got to change. It's got to change seriously. I'm telling you what, you guys are going to get this every two weeks.
It's all right.
We're going to be sitting there and we're going to be voicing our opinions and there's probably a whole lot more of us. People might want to plan on more. People are waking up. They're not going to take this shit sitting there anymore.
We post an agenda. Yes, seven days before, ten days ahead, so we know the agenda.
It was nice. It was posted around town, but it was not on website.
We've got to get the website going. We're working on it.
Put it on the old website. It says, it has a place saying here's today's.
But Nate is not working for us anymore, so.
Scott, he's a smart guy. He can figure it out.
They must be losing their own computer.
If we have my.
We sat.
Okay, so.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I did.
Out of it. Okay. Show me. Yes, so they went with a three and a half percent instead of a five.
Okay, there you go. Thank you, Mark.
Are you happy?
Thank you, folks.
Sure.
If you wish, you can see the barn and the firewood and all that fun stuff. And then, and then it's like, you know, you come over and the door's open. I'll probably be exhausted.
All your projects.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is all.